So, welcome everyone to the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two Board of Selectment Meeting. It's our first meeting of the year, and I'd like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I was a little nervous, I might forget it there. So, we're going to start with public audience, and I'd like to see if we have anyone here from public audience, and I see that we have Joan Coe here. So, you have five minutes, Joan, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. During the fair rent hearing on December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, Town Manager Maria Capriola stated that she assigned the town clerk to research the inception of the commission in past history. This documentation required hours of staff time. The clerk's office has been understaffed for many months, leaving a large workload that is time-sensitive and requires the full attention of the remaining staff. The town manager's office has four employees that could have been assigned to the task without any reduction in town services. This appears to be a failed management of resources by Town Manager Maria Capriola. The town planner position is now vacant with no interim town planner appointed. The workload remains the same with reduced staff. This position requires a highly professional individual that can manage staff, support boards and commissions, and attend many meetings, and work with outside support individuals. Under the management of Town Maria Capriola, with a reputation of creating a toxic work environment, applicants that are highly credentialed will not apply for the town manager position. Under the direction of Public Works Director Roy Renovations of the Police Department, was started without permits, work stopped. The town hall electrical work had to be stopped as work begun with contractors that did not have licenses. The contractor could be fined for a violation of not having a license for work done by Consumer Protection and fines imposed. Is Town Manager Maria Capriola aware that her staff is creating a public safety issues and is in violation of state law? Recently, the town manager of West Hartford has resigned its position, and the job application process was initiated. Rumor has it that Town Manager Maria Capriola has applied for the position following in Matt Hart's footsteps. The police department, under the management of Chief Bolter, has eliminated the ability to access case reports that are public documents. The incident case report book is located on a shelf in the hallway with a sign affixed to the window that states Records Division Dial Extension three one two five for obtaining completed reports. When called, they say they can't release any information. After several days, a yellow paper was affixed to the case report book directing the public to the police department website, or go to the library for access to the case incident reports, not the completed reports. When Chief Bolter was in the hall of the police department where the incident report book was placed, I questioned Chief Bolter about his ability to limit public access to the completed reports, or question about the incidents which were available to the public for many years. This was a drastic change in policy. As the dialogue continued, Chief Bolter questioned my mental state, which appeared to be unethical. I asked him to call the Crisis Center to commit me, as there was a phone on the shelf. He refused. It appears that Chief Bolter is under extreme stress and becomes unhinged, displaying bizarre behavior, and becomes confrontational when being questioned on his management of the police department. Perhaps Chief Bolter should take several mental health days. According to the judicial website, Imagineers, the contractor for managing town rental units filed a lawsuit in the housing court against the renter of fifteen Sugarloaf Cut, December twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty. The renter has not paid a thousand twenty-five rent to the town since June first, two thousand and twenty. The loss in revenue will affect the expenditure budget for the town rentals. This is, and there is another court date on February twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-two. I would like to report that my tweets at Twitter Joan Coe that anyone can view has had from between over a hundred views with the Ethel Walker tweet. Oh, we're sorry about that. One second, sorry.
Yeah, you have one minute, Joan.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right. People are paying attention to the management of town and Board of Ed. Over five hundred views for the Ethel Walker. Inflation and supply availability continues to challenge the town budget with increased costs and delays, especially with large capital projects that have been approved. When developing the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, the town and the Board of Education should be mindful of inflation on everyday expenditures that are impacting the residents on fixed incomes. A recession will reduce savings. There are fourteen active foreclosures in Simsbury. No increase in taxes should be the goal, and all of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and Facebook. Sorry for the inconvenience of having a phone call. Nobody ever calls me, but this time they did.
Okay, thank you.
Very much, listeners. Sorry about that.
And so, we also have another guest tonight. We have Bob Patricelli here to speak to us. And Bob, you have five minutes for the floor.
Thank you very much, Wendy. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm Bob Patricelli. I'm resident at seventy-seven Hartford Road, and have been the owner of Folly Farm almost forty years. And I'm amused to see a picture of Folly Farm at the bottom of our screens on Tom Hazel's name. I've asked for the opportunity to speak today to petition the Board of Selectmen to put an urgent matter on its agenda for their next meeting on January twenty-four, and that matter is the state police firing. Specifically, I would like to urge the board to vote at that next meeting to formally ask the state to shell its plans to rebuild the range in Simsbury. I've got Joan's problem here. And instead, to reopen the consideration of alternative plans and sites. My interest is direct on the principle of abutting landowner to the range. We hear the loud gunfire at all hours, up to ten o'clock at night and on weekends, spooks our horses, interferes with polo events, and degrades our quality of life as residents, and there are many others so affected. And the point is, it doesn't have to continue. The state has been trying to move the range for years, but other towns have rejected them, and they seem to have given up and plan to rebuild an entirely inadequate facility on stilts in a floodplain in Simsbury. Construction would start in the spring. The result would be even greater levels of noise, continued threats to the environment, including from potential lead poisoning and errant gunfire rounds, SWAT teams from throughout New England practicing in our town. But on top of it all, it's a disgrace to pretend that our too small site, which often floods, provides any kind of inadequate sites and the kind of tactical training and facilities that modern police forces need. What they really need, after a lot of research conducted, is a large indoor training facility that could be built on state land in any of numerous places throughout the state with better highway access and without material adverse environmental impact. That's what's happening around the country, large indoor firearms training facility. Yes, it would be more expensive than the outdoor Simsbury option, but aren't we getting a flood of federal infrastructure money for Connecticut that could help that? So, let's just pause this state express train and look again at the alternative. But for that to happen, the town needs to take a stand as soon as possible. The First Selectwoman, Representative Hampton, and I have a meeting with the State's Commissioner of Administrative Services, together with representatives from the governor's office, on January twentieth. And I believe that the First Selectwoman needs to be in a position to say at that meeting that the town is preparing to vote on such a resolution on the twenty-fourth. So, I urge you to begin your discussion of this matter as soon as possible, given the dependency of those meetings and the planned construction start. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. And so, I don't see anybody else here for public audience. And on that note, it's interesting that we happen to have Representative John Hampton and State Senator Kevin Wicco's here tonight to do a legislative visit with us. And I'm going to turn it over to them, and it's possible that they might want to address the state range. I do know that Senator, State Rep Hampton's been involved with Bob, as I've looped him in, and they're trying to talk to the state about this issue. But we can get to that after we do the legislative update, if there's time. And I'm going to turn it over to you guys. I'm not sure who's on deck first.
I'll start. That's okay?
Sure. Hi, John.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. It's great to see all of you. Happy New Year. Great to be here with Senator Wicco's. I wish we were all in person. It's been a while since we've gotten together. So, Senator Wicco's and I thought it would be good to do a quick recap of last session, but a preview of this session, which is the short session, which is coming up in February, the February to May legislative session, where we primarily deal with budgetary issues. But we are also able to submit bills of other cognizance through different committees. But the two thousand and twenty-one session has passed. I've sent some handouts rather late to Wendy to share with the board that covered the two thousand and twenty-one session, some of the highlights. Certainly, at your leisure, review that, and especially review the handout of acts affecting municipalities, because there's quite a few that impact towns like Simsbury. But looking back on two thousand and twenty-one, we passed a bipartisan budget with no tax increases, which was great, and we were able to fund Simsbury, increase funding to Simsbury, and of course, provide ARPA money to the towns. And we're also proud that we did put a three billion, have three billion dollars in our rainy day fund and a nine hundred million dollar surplus in the state budget, which is a great achievement. And just looking forward to the, some of the acts that we passed this past session, we passed some age discrimination legislation, we created an employment pipeline for those with intellectual and developmental disabilities, we got rid of PFAS in firefighting foam, created new pedestrian safety measures. Also, with the legalization of marijuana, the towns like Simsbury are going to be needing to be prepared for that. Also, towns are going to be able to expand the tax relief program for seniors that's already in place. And looking forward to two thousand and twenty-two, obviously, the pandemic is going to be at the forefront. We're not sure if we're going to be in person in February. The Governor's Executive Authority is up in February. As a caucus, we'll be meeting this week to discuss some of our priority issues. A big issue is how a big debate will be, how we spend our monies, the surplus, putting it down toward our pension obligations, putting it in the rainy day fund, increasing aid to municipalities, investing in new programs. We definitely want to address the fallout from the pandemic, particularly to our social services net and our mental health system. I know that's going to be a big topic of conversation. Also looming large is the renegotiation of union contracts, and there's quite a few, and that'll take up a lot of time and resources. Another issue we'll be dealing with is the juvenile justice and car theft issues that have affected municipalities like Simsbury. We'll hopefully be coming to a compromise and some legislation that addresses that. And we did want to make you aware of, and it's in your handout, funding that's available to towns. And I know Kevin probably agrees that we want to make sure that we know your priorities in terms of if you do need state funding, in terms of bonding or grants, that you go after. We'd be happy to help you in that regard. And we want to obviously stay in touch with you as things unfold in the short session, and want to hear from you some of your, you know, not necessarily tonight, but after you've had time to digest what your priorities are for us as we represent Simsbury in the state legislature. So, I'll turn it over to Senator Wicco's.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, John.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to say congratulations to everyone who was victorious in the November election. You know, it's our first time I had a chance to see everybody since I live in the neighboring town. And I just want to say thank you for putting name on the ballot and doing the service that you do. Been doing this, John and I, for a long time, and it does take a lot of time away from your professional lives and your family lives. And I thank you all for doing that. We are scheduled to go back in on February ninth is our opening day of session. As John said, it's a reeviated session. We're out the first Wednesday in May. So, although you can request certain things, I think we're going to be very limited on what we're doing. From what I'm hearing is that the public hearings, again, this session will be done remotely or virtual. I thought that was better for the legislative process, to be honest with you last time, because I think more people had the opportunity to testify that may not have been able to sit up at the Capitol for six hours for two minutes. So, while it may be longer for legislators, I think for the process in of itself, I think it's a good thing, and I hope we can make that permanent in the future. But with that said, I think some of the pressing things that are going to be coming up is the extension of the governor's executive authority. They're due to expire in February, February fifteenth, I think it is, or the twenty-first, one of those two. So, I think if the COVID rates stay the same, you're going to see a request for the extension of those executive powers. I think that, you know, we're not going to do any heavy lifting. I hate to say it that way, but I might anticipate, and it always happens in an election year, there's really no heavy lifting of some major either tax policies or controversial issues, because, again, you know, there's politicians that are going to run for reelection, and they want to make sure that they're not targeted on a specific bill, if you will. So, I think you're going to see, you know, in a general term, ninety-three percent of the bills that come through are unanimous. In the short session, I think you're going to see ninety-seven percent of the bills come through unanimous, because that's just what's going to happen. There are some issues that have been coming up, again, in the planning and development, which I would ask that you all pay attention to. That has to do with zoning issues. From what I'm hearing, those, some of those issues will be back again this year. And so, we need to make sure that, you know, one size doesn't fit all for the state of Connecticut, and that we need to maintain some local control there. So, that's kind of the position that I'll be taking and monitoring as the legislation moves forward. We're doing very well fiscally, and that is due to the provisions that were put in place when the Senate was tied eighteen eighteen. We had a bipartisan budget, and we didn't get it until October, Halloween, I think. But we put bond caps in, volatility caps, and it directs where the money goes. So, there's not a question of how we're going to spend the money, what we're going to spend the money on. Basically, and it's in our statute and in our state constitution on some of these protections and how we're going to do it. So, I think what we're looking at now is the money that's coming in from the federal government, the ARPA funds, how is that going to be distributed? You know, we had some issues with some municipalities that some employees took, as you know, you guys saw the news. And so, I think there's going to be more investigation of that, making sure there's protocols. There's going to be audits out there. So, I think some of those things are going to be looked upon to be addressed. I think you may see some items coming through, either the government and Elections Administration on voting. You know, I, me personally, we already have no excuse absentee ballot voting, so I don't think I would be supporting early voting, because the absentee ballots are available. I think it's thirty days before the election. How much more time do you need than thirty days to cast a vote? So, you can just go down and get your absentee ballot. And I know the register voters are against it as well. So, you may want to talk to your registrars about that. But we will be reaching out, John and I, to hear your concerns on some of these bills, because it's a direct impact on your budgets, because you all finance the, you know, your registrar's office out of your municipal budget. So, we'll be looking at that. But other than that, those are some of the, you know, anything could happen. But I did want to address Bob's issue. You know, that gun range has been an issue for a very, very long time. And I've been, I spoke to two commissioners before Commissioner Ravella on this issue. And we had, as you know, the state bought some land in Griswold, and that's where they were going to move it, and then that got yanked, because they didn't want it there. The real easy solution, which is a zero cost to the state, and, you know, this is something they want to get pushed, I will be pushing it, because Congressman Courtney got in a indoor gun range on a federal facility down in the southern part of the state. They told the state police, they meaning the guard, that you can use our facility anytime you want. It just has to be scheduled with us, and et cetera. And the state police just didn't like that. They wanted their own gun range. Well, you know, the day of, everybody has to have their own, is long gone. I mean, we're talking about regionalization on different things. Well, it's time that we can regionalize an existing gun range facility that I toured it, and it is state-of-the-art, it's top-notch, so it would suit our needs just as well. And it's time we get that site of Simsbury cleaned up and out of there, because it's just not conducive to the work that needs to be done. But I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have. I mean, and two committees that I'm in leadership on, which is the General Law Committee and the Higher Education and Workforce Advancement Committee, we have meetings scheduled in the next two weeks, kind of talk about the concepts that we as a committee want to tackle this next legislative session. So, those haven't even begun yet. So, we're a little bit ahead of the game, which is a good thing. So, we can hear from you what you'd like us to either watch out for, prevent from happening if we can, or introduce if there's something that you think that state government needs to address. But thank you all.
Thanks, Kevin. So, anybody want to ask any questions or follow up on anything that was presented tonight? Eric? Anybody? Because I was just going to ask a quick question, Kevin. So, I know there's a lot out there at the governor regarding tax relief, different kinds of tax incentives, either the state tax. I recently read an article about the regressive, the regressive nature of our property taxes is out there. And are those things, you're saying, they're not going to happen in the shorter session, but future sessions they'll be coming around? Because we actually talked recently about the regressive property tax, you know, as a group here, not this group, another group.
Right, right.
It was curious.
So, I mean, let's, and these are politicians, you know, we're all politicians here. So, GOP Senate Office comes out with a proposal, let's cut the sales tax down for the next year to whatever they offer. I don't recall. So, in return, the Senate Ds come out and say, well, we want to look at reducing the property tax. So, everybody wants to talk about a reduction in property taxes, and I think that's fantastic. Anytime we can reduce taxes, whatever they are, is a good thing. So, how do we move that ball forward? And that was something that I think the Finance Committee, who is responsible, I serve on the Finance Committee, will have a public hearing on. We'll see, you know, what kind of impact does it have? I know that there's more interest, I think, from the body of the legislature to address middle income and lower income for tax cuts than it is to offer, say, a property tax where you have very wealthy individuals that benefit more so than others. I think, so that I think that's going to be, you know, the backdrop of whatever gets accomplished. So, I don't know if it's going to be a standard cut in the property tax. It may be some kind of an offset, looking at, you know, the ratings of the different municipalities in the state, just similar to when we talked about, you know, doing away with the property tax on motor vehicles. And then, you know, we actually passed it in the legislature, and the towns went crazy, because that's a huge reduction in your revenue stream. So, how do you make that up? So, it's really a balancing act. And, you know, for me, I think we're on the right path. We were paying down our long-term obligations, because we always talk about that, but we're actually doing it this time, and we have a fully funded rainy day fund. But we are going to get hit. And I actually got an email today from a private business on the Avon-Simsbury Town Line, where the State Department of Administrative Services is poaching private individuals to try to get them to come and work for the state, because they're trying to prepare for the mass reduction in employee staffing levels because of the contractual changes to their pension plan. So, a lot of them, if you're eligible to retire, will be gone by July one of this year. So, I think that's really the tell-all, who's going to take advantage of it, and what areas. And we've got to, I think that's going to be a big one that we manage that appropriately, because, you know, we have a lot of state employees either working remotely, or they're out. And then, people still rely on state government, whether it's in the judicial branch to hear their cases, or the Department of Labor to go through things, or the Department of Education to get answers. And they're having a very difficult time in getting responses back. So, it's going to be a, you know, a measuring tool for us to make sure that we have the right people in the right place to address all, everybody, all the residents in Connecticut's needs.
All right, thank you. Okay, if we don't have any more questions, we have another presentation tonight from the Clean Energy Task Force. Thank you, Kevin Wicco's and John Hampton for joining us tonight. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Representative.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Someone, Melissa, are you going to, is there a deck that you're going to present?
And I guess while she's doing that, I'm going to, I guess, just do the beginning of the presentation and kind of tee it up for Mark Scully to bring it home. And, you know, I guess it's, maybe it's just after Christmas in the Christmas Carol, but I'm going to kind of do Clean Energy Past, and then Mark is going to come in the role of doing Clean Energy Present and Clean Energy Future. So, now that it's up, if you want to just go right to the next slide, Melissa. We just wanted to really kind of start off by just talking a lot about what we've done. And Simsbury has historically been a leader in terms of clean energy and energy efficiency. This all started way back in two thousand and eight, when the Clean Energy Task Force was formed. And a big part of that, or the goal of that at the time, was to do the twenty percent by two thousand and ten. Seems really funny that back then, we were thinking forward in two thousand and eight to two thousand and ten, and now it seems so, so long ago. But it was great, because that's really what got the Clean Energy Task Force up and running. And as you can see by the rest of this list in the next slide, working together, we've really got a lot done. They've received grants, a pretty sizable grant, back when they started from Aquarian Water. We had the Clean Energy Communities pledge, which we have a substantial number, more than a quarter of our residents and a quarter of our businesses have taken part in. Way back in two thousand and fourteen, Mark Scully, myself, and a lot of others worked really hard on the Solarise Simsbury campaign, where we brought forward low-cost, easy, turnkey solar. And we ended up with about eighty residents in town deciding to put solar arrays on their house. I personally, not through this program, but at that time, actually put solar on my house. I spent so much time going around talking about it. I figured it, you know, kind of walk the walk and talk the talk. We are part of the Small Business Energy Advantage Program, which promotes small businesses to take advantage of energy upgrades. You know, the best money that you can save is the money you don't spend on energy. We put in our first electric vehicle charging station at Town Hall back in two thousand and sixteen, back when we put it in. And I'll be honest, I wasn't sure we would see a lot of use on it. And nowadays, it's rare that I pull into Town Hall, and you don't see at least one vehicle making use of that. We've received some additional grant funding from our involvement in the number of these initiatives, and one of which was the Bright Ideas Grant. We use that to do weatherization and energy improvements to the town-owned low-income rental houses. For those of you that are new to the board, we own three residential rentals up at Simsbury Farms. We own two more out on Wolkett Road, and a final one at the far end of West Mountain, which is technically Sugarloaf Cut. So, we have six single-family homes, or I guess one is a duplex that, we took that Bright Ideas Grant and used it to make those as energy-efficient as possible for the residents that were utilizing those buildings. Perfect. Back in two thousand and seventeen, the board passed a resolution supporting the one hundred percent CT goals, and I think Mark is going to talk a little about that coming up. the one hundred percent CT goals. And I think Mark is going to talk a little about that coming up. We had also in 2017, our first solar array, where we put a very small demonstration array on the high school. That was actually earned through the work that the Clean Energy Task Force had done with the Clean Energy Communities Program. It's still up there, still working fine. I think quite frankly, it's going to be great. I think later this summer, there's plans to add a much larger solar array to the rooftop of the high school. In 2017, the town purchased our streetlights. For years, we used to pay Eversource, not just for the energy that we would use for our streetlights, but we'd also pay them to own and maintain them. We were paying a little bit north of $140,000 a year. The first year that we ended up owning our own streetlights and converted them over to LED, we were paying about $25,000 a year. The additional value to that is we also now own the responsibility of managing our streetlights. So when we have a resident call and tell us that we have a street light out, we're able to manage that ourselves. Small little exception, there are still a few privately owned streetlights in town. Once in a while, they give us a little bit of a heartache. But generally speaking, we've been able to provide a much higher level of service now that we own those assets. In 2017, through a grant, the community farm in Simsbury received a small ground mount solar array. In 2019, we installed a pretty good sized solar array at the skating center and also at Public Works. Those solar arrays combined are saving the town about $35,000 a year in energy. And I think especially the one at the farm is great for kids to see during the summer. They can see the solar array, it looks appropriate on the building. And for all of those that came out in that cold November day for the groundbreaking, remember, we're using the sun to make ice. So and kind of moving on to where we're heading tonight, the Board of Selectment has really been supportive of the Clean Energy Task Force in the past. They've worked on drafting a town energy plan. There's been talk of a climate emergency resolution and updating our clean energy plan. So with all of that in the past, Mark is going to kind of talk about where we are today and move us into the future of the next couple of slides.
Great, thank you, Tom. It's fitting that we get to follow John Hampton and Kevin Witcos. John was instrumental in the formation of the Clean Energy Task Force when he was a selectman years ago. And just following on the theme that that Tom mentioned, that Simsbury is a leader. These charts show the extent to which Simsbury residents and businesses participate in the programs, the efficiency programs that are provided through the utilities, through the energy ICT. We all pay for them on our electric bill. And I won't go into extensive detail on this slide, but if you look at the upper left slide, the blue bars represent in each year, the number of households who got home energy solutions audits. The orange are the home energy solutions, income eligible, which are free, and then the the gray is the residential new construction. The green line is the cumulative percentage of households in the state who are doing this, who are taking part in these, in these energy audits. The yellow is Simsbury. So you can see, we are actually taking part in these programs to a greater extent than many towns in the state and then the state average. Same graph, upper right is who then actually, after they got their audit, got a rebate for insulation, for a heat pump, for a hot water heater, things like that. And then the bottom graph is the same type programs, but for businesses and municipalities. So Simsbury, I mean, as I say, these are programs we pay for. And to a great extent, we are actually availing ourselves of these. Next slide, Melissa. We're, so we're here tonight to speak to you about our energy plan. And just to put it in perspective, we came out with this really a couple of years ago, and we came before the Board of Selectment in August 2019, and we said, we've got this energy plan, we'd love to show it to you. We're not asking you tonight to review all of the details and each of the actions that we're going to take. We just want you to know we have it. We'd like your blessing. We'd like to now go out and meet with different boards and commissions and stakeholders in town. And so we did that over the last couple of years. We've met, we've gotten feedback, and we're here today now with a, with a revised plan. We actually submitted the, our energy plan to Sustainable CT, and it was one of the actions that we got points for. So we have updated the plan and we'd like to show it to you tonight. And you'll see some of the headlines, we're going to sort of go through here. There are five broad areas of action that we're suggesting that the town take action on. They are energy efficiency, heating and cooling, renewables, transportation and microgrids. And we very much view this plan as a work in progress and something that the more people we talk to, the more feedback, both positive and negative that we get, the more it's going to be something that isn't, isn't just the work of a small group, but is something that the community really owns. So Melissa, we can switch now to the actual plan itself. It's also fitting, Tom talked about making ice from the, from the sun. This is a beautiful picture of that solar array up at Simsbury Farms. And I don't think Tom could have fit a single more panel on that roof. But it's really an exceptional example of a, of a, of a solar array. So a next slide, please. Our overall goal in this plan is for Simsbury to use fifty percent clean energy by 2030 and a hundred percent by 2040. And we'll go into a little more about what that means, but that's, that's our aspiration. Next slide. If we, if we do that, there are many advantages, and we'll talk about some of those briefly, but we actually believe we're going to save money if we do that, we're going to be more comfortable, the town will be more resilient, and we'll, and we will all be healthier. Incidentally, these things are popular. If you look back at a survey done for the, the Plan of Conservation Development in 2017, eighty percent of residents agree or strongly agree that we should be a leader in promoting these things. I mentioned the overall goals, and while the, these are challenging and these are going to call upon us to, I think, not just embrace some overall high, you know, arching goals, but actually look at how we procure energy, look at new developments in town. Are they still using fossil fuels? Look at how we promote clean transportation. So I think it's, it's, it gets very real when we talk about some of the actions. But I think an important point is, we believe all of this is possible with existing technology. Next slide, please. Just a brief perspective, you know, since we did the first draft of this energy plan a few years ago, the world has changed. And the two big issues that really, as we were rewriting this last year, were, were in, in the forefront of our minds was the Black Lives Matter, the social unrest, and this pandemic that we're, that we're still fighting through. And I think it's important to just view this in, in that context, that as we, as we make these changes to our energy economy, let's do it in a way that makes sure those who are underserved and have been really distressed and often borne more of the costs and more of the, of the impact of, of, of climate change, let's try to make sure that those groups reap and enjoy a greater share of the, of the benefits and bear a lower share of the cost. And I think the pandemic has shown us many things, but one of the things that has shown us that when we have the will, we can take real action and change our lives. I mean, we're sitting here tonight in front of a screen and not in person, that's and many, many changes to our lives are not going to, are not going to be reversed immediately. So let's take hope in that, that we can actually make dramatic changes because that's really what we're going to need. Next slide. We've got a couple of pages here that really are based on an analysis that the Clean Energy Task Force has done. I'm not going to go into them in detail, but it's sort of a high level key performance indicators, some statistics about, about energy. One that I, I really love to draw attention to is the very first bullet. Simsbury spends roughly $78 million a year on energy. Right? That's our our heating and cooling, that's our electricity, that's our transport, our gasoline for our cars. That's a, that's a huge amount of money. Most of it goes out of town. We're literally burning $78 million a year to run our, to heat our houses and then to run our cars. And I think the point we're, we're, we're making here, and I think we can show this, is that if we start to take some of that money, we're just spending on, on energy each year and invest it in renewables, in energy efficiency. We're going to actually find that we're, that we're saving money in the end. You've got the mix on the lower left of where, where are energy, how it's used between transportation, electricity, heating and cooling. And I love the chart on the lower right. Tom mentioned the Solarize campaign. And when when you look at how much solar energy we produce in town, it's very clear that something changed in 2013, 14, and that was when we did the Solarize campaign. So these types of initiatives and campaigns and programs can make a real difference. And we've seen that. Next slide, please. So the chart on the left is a way of looking at how we're going to get to a clean energy economy. The bars build up our energy usage. We've estimated how much energy we're using to run our electric appliances, our gas heat, our, or our other heat, transportation. We've, we've done the math. We actually took our grand list of buildings and vehicles and made some estimates. We got our our, our gas and electricity usage from the utilities and put it all on a common units and we, and, and we, and then we added it all up. The red bars show if we get serious about efficiency and electrification. Those are the two real, real techniques that we're going to want to employ. As, 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 as Tom said, the, the cheapest form of energy is energy you're not using. So there's a lot of, a lot of energy efficiency we can realize. And if we electrify both our transportation with electric vehicles and our heating and cooling through, essentially through heat pumps, not only do they produce lower greenhouse gases, but they also use significantly less energy. An example is, an electric vehicle uses a much higher percentage of the energy to actually move the car than an internal combustion engine does. So if you, if you reflect those red bars, you end up with a much lower energy load. It's gone down from eight hundred and eighty-four in this graph to three fifty-three. And then a big question is, how much of that can we actually produce in town? Right? How much do we think we can responsibly cite? You know, we all had a, a very controversial experience a few years ago when a large solar farm was placed in town. And we were kind of caught off guard because we hadn't asked ourselves, where do we want, where don't we want solar in town? So we're not going to produce all of the energy we, we need within the town borders. But we want to look, what is, what is a reasonable amount that we can responsibly cite in town? So we've done an estimate. It's 115 gigawatt hours, leaving another about twice that much that we'll need from regional sources. So that's just a sort of a high level way of viewing this transition. And in the interest of time, I'm going to skip the chart on the right. So we'll go to the next slide. And I'm going to skip this page as well. So the next, yeah, go ahead, go ahead to the, yeah, this slide, please. So this is one of the five, you'll see five slides that look just like this. And I'm not going to go into them in, in detail, but they're meant to really provide a little bit of explanation and, and, and education about what are the things we're going to need to do to get to a clean energy economy? This slide is all about energy efficiency. You've got a little description of what it is. You can see on the lower left what progress we've actually made to date. What are the benefits? What are some actions we could take? And what are the goals that we are setting for ourselves? So again, it's, I don't think we have time to go through each of those in detail, but you've got that's, that same slide format. Now, if you go to the next page, we actually looked at these charts already, so I'm going to skip those. So the next page is the same format for heating and cooling. And again, the issue here is, at some point, we need to stop burning fossil fuels and putting CO2 and greenhouse gases into the, into the atmosphere. And one way to do that is to stop using fossil fuels to heat our homes, and that means heat pumps. So there's a lot of information here about what heat pumps are, how we can transition to them, how we can promote them. The next slide is the same approach, but it's, I think it's, you can go, go ahead to, this is all about renewable energy. Where are we going to get the, the energy that we're, that we're going to need? For us, that's basically solar. At least within the town borders, it's solar, solar photovoltaic. Outside of our borders, Connecticut is seeing growth in, in solar and also, and I think, but we're on the cusp of a an explosive growth in offshore wind. So, which really complements nicely with solar because it the wind blows at night and the wind blows in the winter, which isn't the case with solar as well. Next slide. Same format, and this is, these are the things that we need to do to, with our, with our whole transportation system. A big part of that is, over time, as the product offerings increase, we're all going to want to be driving electric vehicles. We're wanting to be, going to be using alternative transportation, public transportation. We want to make sure our town is ready for the electric vehicle revolution that I believe is coming. Do we have the charging that we need? Do we have it in the right places? So there's a lot of work we can do at the town level to sort of make this transition happen. Next slide, please. So the last one here is, it's really about the, about the grid. And essentially, the more renewables we start to add to our, to our grid, the more we want to think about the resilience of the grid. And one way to think of that is microgrids. We tried to build a microgrid in Simsbury a few years ago. We were not successful, but the idea of taking a small section of some critical facilities, maybe it's the high school, maybe it's the school bus lot, maybe it's the water pollution control, police station, some of the medical facilities. And building a little grid that contains those facilities also has some solar, some generation, has some battery storage, so that in the event that the wider grid goes out, we're able to keep those critical facilities running, keep the water running, keep the school open, which is of course also an emergency shelter. So that's something we want to be thinking about is where do we want microgrids to ensure the resilience of the town? Really critical facilities. Next slide, please. All right, this is really the guts of the presentation, and I'm going to close with this slide. And this is really what we, this draws on the slides we just, we just looked at. But what this shows is what are the actions that we and the Clean Energy Task Force and the Sustainability Committee aim to take over the next year or two? And then over the next eight years, getting up to, getting up to 2030. And we're not going to accomplish every one of these, but this is what we're sort of setting out for ourselves. I think you can say that sort of the left column, the 2021 dash 22 is our agenda for the task force for the next year. Right? And you can see some of the things we want to do. We want to look at, at town buildings and look at when, when are we replacing roofs? Well, that's a good time to look at solar. When are boilers going to need to be replaced? Well, that's a great time to look at heat pumps. We want to gradually transition our, our municipal vehicles over to to electric. We'd love to explore the idea of a, of getting some electric school buses, and there's going to be probably increased funding for those things going forward. I think a really important step that we would love to see the town take, and it's put a midway down in this blue section, is, is hire an energy manager in town. We, we, I've seen many other towns that have an energy manager, and invariably, that person has more than paid for their, 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 their salary by attracting grants to the town, by promoting efficiency, by increasing the performance of buildings, performance bonding. So there's all kinds of things we can do. And I think going forward, that will even be the case more. There are grant opportunities for charging stations. There are going to be grant opportunities for electric school buses. And there's all kinds of things we can do. So I'd love to see, and I know we've had some conversations along those lines, I'd love to see that move forward because great as Tom Roy and his many skills and great team are, there's just so much more that we can be doing in the energy space. So we'd love to, we'd love to see that. I'm not going to go into all this in detail because I think it's just, you know, you've got it, you can go through it. We are always available to come back or for individual questions, but that's really, you know, we would love for you to sort of give your, give your support to this plan. And, you know, we will see, I think, over time, the more people see this, the more people get exposed to this, it becomes part of our conversation so that we're looking at new developments in town. So we're looking at land use, we're looking at bicycles, we're looking at all kinds of topics through the lens of clean energy. So I'll close with that. If there's any questions, be happy to, happy to entertain them.
Yeah, I'd like to open this up if anybody from our group has questions.
Wendy, I do have a couple of questions.
Oh, cut her.
Okay, let Eric then Sean.
Okay. First, I just want to recognize Mark and the entire Clean Energy Task Force for the expertise and the passion and the time that you bring to this work and are, the service that you're delivering to our town. And to the amazing Tom Roy, because this doesn't work without staff support. It doesn't work without, if we are not able to connect this work to our facilities master plan and the active work that we're, that we're doing in that space. I just wanted to highlight for the board that one of the things that Mark mentioned that I'm particularly passionate about is the idea of a, an energy manager. Basically, someone who can take these ideas and manage these projects so they come to fruition. Because, Tom, I know you have the passion for this work, but not necessarily all of the time. Because Tom, I know you have the passion for this work, but not necessarily all of the time. Um, and, and as um, Mark said, this is a position um, that if we did move forward with it, I would hope um, and expect it to more than pay for itself. So um, and I think West Hartford actually has a nice example, um, if we wanted to talk to another town that was doing this. Um, the question I had is actually for Tom. Um, I'm interested in your thoughts on the um feasibility of electrifying some portion of our, our fleet. If we, um, I'm sure it's something you've thought about. Um, we may not be ready for an electric fire truck or dump truck quite yet. But if we were to dip our toe in that direction, where would you start?
Boy, that's, that's a tricky and, and a tricky question that I like tonight. Um, we, we'd actually put in a couple of times in the budget for kind of the, I'm going to call it the one or two run around vehicles we have related to Town Hall, where the assessor has a car, engineering and the computer department share a car. Um, often what they've done, and it's a little bit better now, where they used to take, you know, an old police Crown Vic with a V-eight and a police interceptor engine. And now they're using that to run around with the building inspector or the town engineer. And I'd always thought that would be the great place to start. Um, you don't have big issues with range. It's starting and stopping every day from the same place. And again, it's starting to dip a toe in the water and, and get where we need to go. Um, and I think there, there's some, and again, we have to be very careful. This would be a, a little bit more than a toe in the water, but I've had some preliminary conversations with Nick Bolter in the police department. There are some talk of doing that. Um, they have a whole different level of um, requirements in their vehicles, and they want to be very careful. So that might be phase two or phase three. Um, but certainly the vehicles that we're using just as cars essentially. So um, the one that we currently have for assessor, the town engineer, um, um, thinking if we have a couple out at parks, you know, the ones that don't plow snow, that don't necessarily respond to emergencies. Instead of using an old vehicle and having all of the maintenance costs associated with that, um, let's make those electric.
And just, just, just picking up on that, I put a link in the chat to an article, uh, to a, to a, to a blog post um, where the Electric Vehicle Club of Connecticut did an analysis of the economics of a Tesla that the Westport Police um, bought. And it actually concluded that they're saving money through this.
Thanks for that, Mark.
I just got a follow up though. I mean, the, the reason we haven't done that though, um, is because it's not cost effective for us. I mean, that's, I mean, that, I, I'm not, I'm all for, but I mean, the reality is, is the economics don't work. It's cheaper to buy fleet gas cars and put gas in them than it is to buy an electric car, right? So we'd have to, we'd have to pay more than we are now, these vehicles.
I, I, I would put one caveat to that. I think with being a municipality, if we time it right, um, and work with some of the grant opportunities, that's the way to get our, our foot in the door.
Okay. And that's, that's what my follow up is, is how do we do it? Or, I mean, again, I'm all for it, but again, if we've got to pay ten or twenty percent more, that becomes, you know, the challenge for us here on the budgetary side is we nickel and dime ourselves over a thousand bucks sometimes. So I, again, I commit to this for sure, but it's, those numbers add up, you know? And I would love to have Teslas, and I'm sure the police officers would too. But if you got to pay, you know, most of us can't afford Teslas individually. So it's, uh, you know, they're not cheap. So, but.
No, that's absolutely right. And I think um, that, I mean, that's true of a lot of the technology. Fortunately, the prices of solar, the prices of batteries are coming way down. And I, there are a lot of studies that suggest for um, many types of electric vehicles, we have already reached the point where if you look at the lifetime cost, um, they are actually less now. And that's, that's going to be increasingly the case.
And I think that's really important, Mark, right there is it's not the, the day one dollar. I mean, and they could be ten grand more, but over the five or seven year, twelve year lifespan, if we end up saving several thousand or, you know, that's, that's an important argument. And just to tie into the staffing thing, is that where that energy consultant individual would be providing that type of analysis or where does that come from?
That analysis was, would certainly be benefiting from having the energy manager. As um, I think it was Eric said, um, as he inflated my ego a little bit there is I would love to have the time to do this, but I have other things to take up my day. Um, I have a real passion for energy um, efficiency. And again, it's, it's laying out how to come up with the math to show the total uh, operating value of a vehicle over its lifespan is not that hard. But you're right, it's taking the time to do that. It's taking the time to chase down some of these smaller grants is where that would, would definitely come into play.
I have a question for you. Are, are you asking for any of these in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget?
Uh, Mark through the clean, Mark through the Clean Energy Task Force has asked that I put that in. So that was going to be something that would um, be presented as an option.
Okay, and one thing I will add here is we are still in the midst of doing our goal setting. And we um, are meeting on the twenty-seventh. So having this information as we go into that is really good to, to have. Um, because we couldn't finish the first day, so now it's, it's ahead of us. I think it's a really good conversation to have. Um, I just want to ask the question, taking, if Amber, I don't know if you guys have a question, but about the um, charging stations, you mentioned that there's grants to put those in. Like, I don't know how we got the one that we have. Did we pay out of pocket for that? Was that just a grant that gave it to us? Because I hear that as a concern from people that I know regarding just going electric.
Yeah, the um, we, we did two things with, with that. Originally, we put out a request for proposals where we wanted to test the market. And we actually um, put it out to the industry that builds these charging stations way back ten years ago. We said, we will give you two spaces at Town Hall. We'll take care of the maintenance. We will allow you to build and operate this from our facility. And you can even charge whatever rate you feel is reasonable for the electricity. And at the time, there was no interest in that. So we went back to the drawing boards and we were able to build um, the entire um, charging station was built with a grant, but that also prohibited, at least for the first, um, I think, three to five years, we would not be allowed to charge for electricity. We still do not charge for electricity. Um, just today, we had an internal discussion um, with our uh, new facilities manager at that we're going to track the energy used by that charging station, just so we can put a dollar value to it each year.
And I just put another link in the chat. Uh, Pura came out last year with a, a, a new incentive program for electric vehicle service equipment. And um, again, it, it takes the time, somebody sort of sorting through what that means and putting out their procurement, basically doing, doing the procurement. But I think the, the, the incentives are significant for putting some charging stations. And I think it's, it's incumbent on us and the task force, and, and this is something that, that we are working on, is uh, advising you, uh, where should those go, right? Because it, we want to think that through. Most of, if you own an electric vehicle, most of your charging is at home. The next logical place would be at work and then places you're spending time, right? You know, restaurants, maybe stores, but you know, we don't need them everywhere that you're there for just a short period of time. So we want to think that through.
Our tip to that, and I mean, sadly, or also positively, because I'm a capitalist, everything in this country comes down to making a buck. So why hasn't that taken off? If you can charge for these charging stations, why, why hasn't that come to municipalities like ours where there are a lot of Teslas, where there are a lot of energy vehicles? Because my concern is when the government gets involved, it, we're either so far ahead of things that we're brilliant or we're investing taxpayers' dollars in something the market doesn't want to spend, therefore it's a subsidy.
Yeah, I don't see the town government needs to play a big role in um, in providing free electricity for people who, who have electric cars. I think um, we want to look at, we want to do everything we can in the town to, to, to think through and be ready as more and more people driving electric cars. But it's wonderful that people who use that charging station get free electricity. But I don't expect that as electric, as like a vehicle. And I don't think electric vehicle users expect free charging. But uh, if we can make it convenient and um, you know, for people to, to make that shift to, to electric vehicles, then that, that's something we can do.
Yeah, I mean, it's just the optics are, you know, that, that, and it's probably not that much. But if you've got a hundred thousand dollar, you know, SUV Tesla out there that the taxpayers are paying for, it just, I don't love those optics, right?
There's some cheaper Teslas, just so you know.
Yeah, but uh, again, there's still more than most can afford, but it is the reality.
Tom Hayes, Chris, sorry, that makes some, anyways, uh, it, would it, I'm not a proponent, I'm not advocating, I'm not saying goal setting, put the, the energy manager on, I'm just asking a question right now, I don't want to. Would, would, would the logical place or to consider Tom remark is to, that be a shared, shared cost, shared service between Board of Selectment and Board of Ed, assuming that the Board of Ed has large, far more, you know, sizable physical plants that could uh, take advantage of efficiencies? Is that just, is that a logical and also a way to help it budgetarily?
I, I, I think that would certainly make sense. Um, and I would be comfortable with that being within Public Works, you know? Um, part of my background is in energy management. Um, and, and certainly would maybe that we can hire somebody um, with a few years less experience and, and give them that coaching and, and have a good relationship. I think when you look at the square footage of the buildings that the Board of Ed maintains, um, they're really suited well for some of these energy efficiency programs.
And fair, fair to say that as we, as, as Mark, I think Mark mentioned, i- i- as we tackle potentially the next large scale, the, 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 the ship has sailed on Latimer Lane. But if we tackle squadron line and we were, and we had a, a, a manager attached to that and somehow a million dollars could be saved out of what have been a conventional proposal because we had the right person advocating and working on behalf, on behalf of the town versus the contractor or the bidding consultants, that would be a way to certainly look at the savings, I would think, you know, justify it more than justify it. And that, I think, that kind of project.
Yep, I think that's one place that an energy manager could have a role. Um, in a lot of what you want to do there is just make sure you have the right spec upfront. You know, what are you asking the design team to do? The place where, in Mark mentioned, West Hartford, where the energy manager has just done a great job is both bringing awareness to energy efficiency and then saving energy within um, both the town and school buildings. And some of what she's done that was exciting is having contests between the different uh, elementary schools to see who could lower their um, energy bill by the most. Um, and I, I think at one point, um, she told me they actually had to talk to teachers about they can't shut off the lights during the class anymore. But the, it got kids engaged, it got the people in the buildings engaged. And you know, that provides benefit not just to the town or the school, but that really gets to Mark's point of changing the way people think.
Eric, didn't you report last time that there, the Latimer roof, roof is solar ready, I thought?
Yeah, so Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're making it such that it, it will, you know, they can essentially plug in a solar array. It'll be ready to go, you know, if we're able to um, invest in one.
Okay.
Right, and actually, we've had some really good engagement with the Board of Ed on the, on the Latimer project. We, we came late in the sense that the referendum had already set the budget. But we've been able to work with the Public Building Committee and, and some of the architects. And there's a very good chance that um, that it, it's going to come down to whether we can do it with, within that budget that had already been set. But there's a very good chance we can have um, close to a net zero school um, by the time we're done with Latimer.
I have a, a quick question. First, I, I wanted to say thanks so much to both Mark and Tom. This was a really great presentation with lots of information. Um, and my question has to do with individuals, like with residents that especially, it looks like there's so much opportunity, you know, on the town level for us to make a difference because we really have like the big buildings and, and kind of the size where you can really get a lot of uh, cost savings. For people that are looking to do this at a, at a resident, at their own home, um, what kind of investment are they looking at? And, and that investment that they put in their property, does that affect their assessed value of their property? So that they could essentially be paying more in taxes if they improve their property to make these, you know, like put in a, a, a solar array or something? I'm just curious how that affects an individual.
I mean, I think you're right, and this is one of the points we've made talking about the school, about, about Latimer Lane. That one decision, the way Latimer Lane is going to be rebuilt will dwarf every light bulb swap and uh, solar project that we, that we promote, you know, residential solar. But there is a great deal that individuals can do. And it, it, you know, it's, you, you can, you can consider solar, you can get a home energy solutions audit, make your, make your, you know, improve your building envelope, reduce your energy usage. As be ready so that at, when your boiler or your furnace fails, and it's going to fail in the middle of winter and the pipes are going to freeze, that you've thought through, am I just going to get another natural gas furnace? Or am, are we going to start to transition to heat pumps? Because that's a complicated decision. So I think be, be ready or think about, you know, maybe with my next car, you know, are we ready for an electric? Or, or a plug-in hybrid, you know, does that work for me? So I think it's, uh, and I, I'm not sure of the tax, of the tax implications. And I don't think we know yet whether if you put solar on a, on a, on a building, um, is it going to increase the, the, I think it's just some, some market studies have shown that uh, if you make, put solar on, on, on a building, it, it does actually um, help its, help its sale price. But I don't think we know.
Yeah, I, I would say, Amber, um, one great question, and because um, way back, what got me all excited about energy efficiency is we did the home energy solutions um, back in, I think, two thousand and eight, when it first started. And we changed out all of our sixty watt bulbs to um, the compact fluorescents. In the next month, we saved twenty-five to thirty dollars and I was sold. And then we've just been able to take that same attitude and approach to what we've done at the Town Hall. Um, the Simsbury Library has a couple of energy audit tools that you are able to borrow. Um, one is a unit that you plug according to, it goes through this unit and then into the wall. So you can find out how efficient is your refrigerator? You leave it in for a couple of days, you pull it off, it tells you how much energy it used. And now you can compare that with a new Energy Star rated fridge. And I always have the joke that everybody goes to the landfill, takes the old fridge, puts it in their garage and says, oh wow, I'm going to keep my beer out here. So to keep that six or twelve pack of beer, you may be paying four hundred dollars a year in electricity. It might be a lot cheaper to go down to Holloway's and get a small, energy efficient cube fridge. And these are the things that I think are great where we can get the word out to residents.
Tom, everybody knows since they passed Sunday sales, you don't need a beer fridge in Connecticut anymore.
Okay. Well, thank you guys for coming. That was really, really informative and a lot to think about going forward in the next eight to eighteen years, right? It's not, not that far.
Thank you very much.
Bye. Okay, so, bye. Moving on in the agenda, oh, to the first selectments report, which I will keep very short. Um, I am not going to wish everyone a happy new year because according to Larry David in this season's Curb, you cannot wish people a happy new year after January seventh. So missed the cutoff on that. I don't know if anybody's watching, it's, it's a pretty funny season. I do want to just, I, I'm sure Maria's going to address this, but I just want to comment on the test um, kit event last Wednesday night that, you know, could thank everyone involved in planning and executing, but I really want to thank the residents that night because people were truly thankful to be there, not complaining. Um, it went, they were so, it was so smooth. And we, at the end of the night, when we did have test cases still remaining, um, people came out, you know? We were put, we pushed people to come out, they all came and they were really thankful. So I just want to thank that everyone involved in that and hope, hopefully Saturday will go as smoothly. And um, you know, it is a, to, talking about test cases right now, we do have in our back pocket as needed, the, the ability to use some of this American Rescue Fund money for test kits. If the need or opportunity arises where we could buy some either with a neighboring town, um, Maria had presented that with the Farmington Valley. I don't think anybody was that interested on that call, but that is available if there is an opportunity to purchase that. And we could regroup as a team, as a board, um, if that opportunity comes around. So I just wanted to let people know that that's out there. I think the word on the street is that we may get through this fairly quickly, looking at other countries, towns, whatever, really countries that have gone through Omicron. Um, so just kind of keep an eye on that. Um, we've been asked people about mask mandates. Right now, there is no plan to do one in the town of Simsbury, nor is there one coming from the state. A couple other towns, neighboring towns have re-instituted theirs, but at this point in time, we are not doing that. Um, and we, we have heard from people. I just wanted to acknowledge that people are asking. Um, I want to thank or, or acknowledge the, the award that the town received um, from the Federated Garden Club of America, that we were presented with an award, the Lucille Chabot Award. It was basically presented to a club for outstanding garden club. And it was really, um, this is around the Flower Bridge, and it was really done because they created a self-sustaining pollinator pathway. So there was a lot of good work done there that was acknowledged um, for that. And then the, just the last thing I mentioned, I just mentioned that, but it's the goal setting session that we have. We are still in the process of looking at our goals. And um, we'll continue that till it's done and prioritizing that because that really gives the board an opportunity to, to meet as a board and talk things through and look at what we can do for, for the town residents and businesses in the coming couple of years. So um, I'm going to stop there and turn it over to Maria for the town managers' report.
Hey, thanks, Wendy. Good evening, everyone. Um, so a lot has been happening um, in regards to our pandemic response over the last few weeks. Um, as many of you are aware, we are currently at the red alert status um, for the municipal. for the municipal alert system. And we actually, over the most recent two week period in which we have data for, we are at 104.4 cases per 100,000 people. And over the most recent two week period, that equated to 371 new cases here in Simsbury. Our positivity rate was 16.2%. All of these numbers are the highest numbers for us since recording began during the pandemic. And what the Health District did have to share with us is that the hospitalizations in Hartford County have increased by 56% over the last seven days. And in the fall and summer, we did have quite a few folks asking us if there is any way to break that down by town in terms of the hospitalizations. But unfortunately, the state is not tracking the data in that way. So the Farmington Valley Health District only has sort of anecdotal information through contact tracing when they're, they're working with somebody from Simsbury who might have been hospitalized. But regrettably, the best we can do is, is by county. What the Health District does believe is happening that these hospitalizations, they believe are being driven more so by the significant number of cases that we're seeing as opposed to the severity with this particular variant.
Quick question, is that hospitalizations for Farmington Valley residents or hospitalized in the Farmington Valley as a UConn?
That is the hospitalizations for Hartford County. We can only get the data by county, unfortunately, yeah.
So I, again, do we, so that's residents of Hartford County, not the actual beds being taken up at the area hospitals?
I believe it's residents, but I will double check that with the, with the Health District. I'm just going to make notes so I can confirm.
Sorry, I was just trying to understand.
Yeah, let me just double check and I'll report back to you guys on that. They did also share with us that 68% of those people that were hospitalized were not fully vaccinated. And within a period of about four weeks, the Omicron variant did become the dominant variant here in Connecticut. I just wanted to also briefly speak to the state test kit distribution and the impact that had on us here in Simsbury. It was an incredibly challenging situation for us here at the local level. And I know that many of our municipal counterparts also struggled with, with the state announcement and rollout of that back on December 27th. The information that we were receiving from the state was changing frequently and rapidly over about a week and a half period of time. Oftentimes, day to day, the information was changing drastically. We needed to shift gears multiple times, whether it was regarding logistics, prioritization of kit distribution. And this was again, as both the number of kits and method of distribution from the state was fluctuating. Based on guidance that we did ultimately receive in terms of the final guidance from the state, as well as some recommendations from the Farmington Valley Health District, we did prioritize a small number of our test kits for essential workers as well as daycares and our vulnerable populations of people. For example, through the VNA, they work with homebound and elderly individuals. That's a, for example, of a vulnerable population that we prioritize to get for. We were able with the remaining kits to hold a very safe and efficient distribution event on January 5th that Wendy had referenced. And we were able to give out approximately 700 kits to our residents. We are holding a second general distribution event on Saturday, January 15th. That's going to begin at 9:00 AM at the Public Works Facility, which is located at 66 Town Forest Road. For people who participated in the first event, we are asking folks to observe that same traffic pattern. So to please enter off of essentially West Mountain Road to Tooton Hills and to come into the Public Works Garage that way. We will also be distributing N95 masks at the distribution event. And we do know that it has been frustrating for residents, obviously, to purchase, you know, test kits locally as well as to obtain tests at various medical facilities. So something that a lot of folks, I, I don't think realized, but we've tried to push out this information. So I just want to remind people this is available. But we have, through my office, been keeping a list since the summertime of all of the testing sites within about a 20 to 25 minute drive of Simsbury. And that list is available on our website. We've provided the link here in my report tonight. So we're hoping that that list will make it a little bit easier for folks when they are searching for a test that, okay, here's, here's everybody within a 20, 20, you know, 25 minute drive who is offering tests right now. Again, as opposed to just randomly searching on the internet, that we do hope that's a resource that helps people in, in search of a test.
Oh, Maria, I was just going to add to that, that, you know, there is a testing site and a vaccination clinic at Bradley International Airport. And for anyone that has a family member that's in that 12 to 15 year old age group that can get boosted, it is very difficult to find appointments for them through pharmacies and pediatrician offices. Not all of them are offering them yet. But you can get them at that Bradley International Airport clinic. And I was able to get in and out of there in about half an hour with no appointment yesterday. So it was, it was amazing. And I shared that information on my deputy for selectmen page, but it's, it's kind of a hidden gem there. You didn't have to make an appointment and there was no line. So it was worthwhile. Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you for sharing that. It's very good information to have. And also just a very quick update in regards to the COVID impact on our workforce. So we are seeing the most significant impact on our workforce since the pandemic began. So similar to the community level of transition, transmission that we're seeing, we're also seeing that amongst our workforce. Currently, as of today, we have four members, staff members who are out of work due to being positive and another two who are out for quarantining measures. In the month of December, we did have our highest number of staff members out due to COVID at any point during the pandemic. You know, we are just sort of reminding folks, as we did in earlier phases of the pandemic when we had case surges, is that for non-emergency services? You know, we may just experience slightly slower than normal responses or slight delays. But again, for emergency services, obviously that's very different. But for those non-emergency issues, if we are experiencing a staff shortage, we just ask for patience. As, you know, maybe instead of that day, it's the next day you might hear from somebody. We are also reminding folks again, that we do have, many of our services are available online. We have a really handy flyer to that regard that provides links to different online services we offer. So we're just republicizing that as well due to the most recent surge. And we are still requiring masking in our town facilities. Sometimes I know that members of the public, they may not understand or realize that many members of our municipal workforce are essential workers. It's, you know, the folks who are plowing our roads. It's the people who are keeping our sewer system working. So our toilets are flushing, it's our dispatchers. We have many, many members of our workforce who need to keep going under any circumstance. You know, we can't take sort of a pause. If a lot of our staff members get COVID and regroup, we need to keep charging, charging ahead. So we are still asking our visitors to please wear a mask when you visit our facility so we can keep those important staff members working. We've also included some vaccination statistics for folks in the report. And just a couple of quick notes under department news and notes. For the Department of Public Works, I wanted to thank and acknowledge our highway staff and facility staff. We had a storm on Christmas Eve and Christmas morning that required our staff to come in and treat our roads. And oftentimes, again, it's very hard work that might not go recognized. And these folks had to give up part of their holiday to help make sure that our roads were safe and passable for our residents. So again, just really wanted to thank them for all of their efforts in keeping our roads safe during the Christmas holiday. And I also wanted to thank those same folks. They were just absolutely amazing during our recent test kit distribution. Our highway crew in particular did the bulk of the staffing and setup and breakdown for us. I, I get, I just can't say enough wonderful things in terms of how efficient the event was, how safe it was. You know, Wendy already shared, you know, our residents were so appreciative and our Public Works staff just did again, a great job with logistics and and keeping it all moving in a very positive way. And after some of the, you know, the stories we saw in some other communities that were just, you know, experiencing traffic jams, long wait times. Again, I just really can't thank this team enough. And again, they had already, you know, just come off of a pretty intense week as well with inclement weather. So many thanks to them.
Thank you. Oh, now my, my dog's barking now because I he's in the room. So anyway, let's move on to the selectman liaison and subcommittee reports. And I just want to add, I'm going to just cut in here first on the personnel topic because I meant to, in, in my, I keep calling it my town management report, the first selectman report, I wanted to just mention that, you know, Mike Liddin, our town planner has, has left the town. He went to work in Cheshire and so the town is looking for a new town planner. So that's just something that the public should be aware of and that we plan to discuss. You know, his replacement, there's the application process at our next personnel meeting, which is this coming Thursday. And with that, I will turn it over to any other Boarding Commission reports. Eric.
I've got an update from Spirit. Sean and I are co-liaisons to that committee. There's a lot of work going on on Spirit and I'm really going to highlight one thing, which is that in February, they are doing a four-part series on Black history, Indigenous people history, Mexican-American and Asian-American history. In four parts, it's going to be led by Lloyd Hewie and Carol Clark Flanagan, who are two Spirit members. And you can sign up for those four sessions. It's the first four Wednesdays of February on the library's website. Spirit has four committees on housing events, data and outreach. And in the, the past year and a half, they've been coming to our board on a quarterly basis to update us on those things. There's a lot of work going on. And I'm hoping that that's something that the board would be supportive of, of continuing that, that tradition so that we maintain that dialogue with them. That's my update. Sean, anything you wanted to add?
I just, I think you captured it well. Thanks.
Okay.
I have an update from the zoning committee. I attended the meeting last Monday and the committee closed the public hearing on considering whether to opt out of Public Act 21-29, which is regarding accessory dwelling units and parking standards. And the public hearing on that was closed and the zoning board did vote to opt out of that public act. And so that is, they are going to be putting a memo on this to the Board of Selectmen along with an analysis regarding the statute that will apply to the state statute regarding accessory dwelling units. So that we can take a look at the proposed statute from the state, which would be the default statute regarding accessory dwelling units and what Simsbury's regulations currently are. And that will eventually come up to the Board of Selectmen and we will be able to consider whether or not we want to vote on opting out of that state statute. And if we do, then we would have the opportunity to look at our zoning regulations regarding accessory dwelling units. So the first step of that process has started with the zoning board recommending that we opt out and getting ready to prepare to send this to us at a later date.
Thank you. And Amber, did you mention that it, the action doesn't need to be taken until 2023, January?
We do have, we do have this year to take a look at this. So if we took no action, then by default, we would be essentially opting into the state statute regarding accessory dwelling units, which would be effective January 2023.
Thanks. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So let's move on to selectman action. And the first item on the agenda is the tax refund requests. And I'm just going to read the motion here. Move effective January 10th, 2022 to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $36,121.02 and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capiola to execute the tax refunds.
I'm moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries. Now we move on to, oh, the donation from Garrity Asphalt Reclaiming. So Maria, you want to give the background on this item?
Sure. We've received a very generous donation from Garrity that would help support our social service clients who are in need. It's in the amount of $5,000 since that exceeds the $1,500 under ordinance. It would just require acceptance by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. So I'm going to move effective January 10th, 2022 to accept a donation from Garrity Asphalt Reclaiming. Thank you. In the amount of $5,000 for the purpose of supporting Simsbury Community and Social Services Department programs that assist residents in need. Motion?
So move. Take that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, that was Amber and Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
The next item is another donation from Teresa and Bill Kramer. They're donating $1,500 to the Community and Social Services Department to help people in town who are less fortunate. As they stated in the letter accompanying their donation, they want to use the donation to provide food assistance to Simsbury residents in need. It's really helpful in the, in, you know, given cope the pandemic on our residents. So I'm just going to move effective January 10th, 2022 to accept a donation from Teresa and Bill Kramer. Again, thank you. In the amount of $1,500 for the purpose of supporting Simsbury's food pantry and programs. I get a motion.
So I'll make that motion just with a point of clarity. You're looking for a motion, right? You're not actually making the motion, Wendy?
I'm moving, I'm reading the motion.
So you're looking for a motion? Just want to clarify.
Yes, I am.
All right. So I'll, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so that was Sean and Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. The next, yep, thank you. The next item is the 2022 JAG Local Violent Crime Prevention Grant. And I'm going to turn this over to Maria and Chief Volter, if he's on the call, to present the information.
Hey, thanks so much. So this is a really nice opportunity for us. The last time this program was available to us was in 2018. These are funds that are passed through to us by the state, but ultimately really it's coming from the federal government. We're able to use the funds for various technology needs that the police department has. The way that the state allocates funding for this program is, it's essentially done on a proportional share for communities that do have police departments. And if we simply express that we want the funds, we are guaranteed the funds. There is one particular piece of equipment in dispatch that we will need to replace with the current Public Safety Communications Upgrade project that's underway. So we thought that that would be a very good use of the funds. So again, it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything.
Okay, so we're going to move effective January 10th, 2022 to apply for and accept the 2022 JAG Local VCP grant and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capiola to execute all documents related to the grant application and award.
I'll move that.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay.
Sean, second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Lot of pages in here. Sorry, it's like a lot of, a lot of documentation in between. Okay, so this item is the Capital Region Council of Governments. The CROG, Funding Solicitation for Transportation Projects. And we've heard a little bit about this, but Maria, I'll let you take this over and if Tom's going to weigh in too.
Great, thanks Wendy. I'll mostly turn this over to Tom. This particular grant may look a little familiar to folks who've been on the board for a while. It's the Lotsit Program that is available through our Capital Region Council of Governments. And our staff, which included Tom Roy and our town engineer Jeff Shea, as well as our project engineer Dan Gannon, in particular, looked at projects that we had that might score well under the criteria for this particular grant program. And it is a project that we have brought before you previously for some grant opportunities. And it would be to construct a section of sidewalk along Firetown Road, which is also outlined in our pedestrian and bike master plan. So I'll let Tom take it from here.
But I, I think you covered it well. This is just, I think, a very important section of sidewalk for the town. When we've put the grants in, in the past, we've had conversations with both Hot Metal Country Club, because this would have an impact on their property. And also with Governor's House. And I actually had the chance to speak to Tony Hirono from Governor's House this week again. He'd actually seen the agenda and he can't, he is just so excited about the opportunity to maybe get this sidewalk in place for the number of older residents at Governor's House that walk frequently. And this provides them safe access essentially to downtown. It's also a great connectivity between the high school and the middle school. So kind of a valuable piece of sidewalk if we can get it done.
And, and I'm sorry, Tom, just, uh, I, you know, we've been this merry-go-round before. Uh, what's, you know, we get it done, just restate the, uh, sort of the different timely, um, timeline, high points.
Okay, uh, in terms of timelines, this would be, you know, a full, full grant process that we would probably, if we submit the, the grant, which would be submitted, um, very quickly on the 19th of this month, we would probably get notification within the next two to three months, we would not be able to construct it this summer. And it would look like it would be summer 2023 at the earliest for construction. Um, this grant paid 100% of the construction cost. The town is eligible or liable rather for the full cost of the design fees. We are currently proposing that we would do this in-house design. So we would only be burdened with the cost of doing a full survey, which would be in the range of $30,000. I think that's a pretty comfortable number. I think we could get that done for less. Um, if we were to contract out the full design and survey, the cost or the value of that would be in the range of $130,000.
Thanks. And what, and do we ever hear, do we ever get feedback, um, on the previous time around the merry-go-round? I said, why, you know, where we fell short or why our, um, number didn't pop?
We, we did get quite a bit of feedback on that and, and, um, what I, what I would say is that, um, we, I believe we applied for this twice before, once under this Lotsit program where simply the competition for other, um, projects within this category, um, edged us out. And under the Connecticut DOT Community Connectivity Program, which is an easier grant program to administer, they have, um, essentially, it's get it done, make sure it was done right, and then they, they give us full reimbursement. Where under the Lotsit, we have 30% submitted, 90% submitted, a number of other reviews. Um, they actually have reached back out to us recently, very recently and said, there's a chance that they may go back and look at, um, projects that were just short of the mark last time and potentially give us another bite at the apple. So to a certain extent, we may be, um, basically taking a two-pronged approach at receiving grant funding for the sidewalk right now.
Thank you.
Outstanding work. Thanks for doing this, Tom. This is, this is huge if we get this, so.
Yep.
Wendy, just real quick, I just wanted to share that I've, I, I've gotten more, um, feedback about a potential sidewalk in this location than any other, uh, any other place in Simsbury. Very much.
You could walk, you could walk everywhere, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know it's been a long night, but we did the pedestrian bicycle master plan. I'll be honest, the results came back and said that people want sidewalks. It was really surprising.
Well, and, and think about the connectivity as well, because you've got the Owensbrook Multi-Use Trail that connects to Iron Horse, right? So we can get all the way from Iron Horse up Owensbrook to the sidewalks your team just did, Tom, right? To the junior high and then it stops. Alright, so this would then complete that loop for folks that are, they're following along at home. It would then connect up to the, the, uh, West Street Multi-Use Trail. You could then go to the high school to Stratton Brook. Or you could connect back to the other, other end of Iron Horse. So, I mean, this is the no-brainer, no brainers in terms of connectivity. So it's, it's outstanding that, uh, you've, you've stayed after getting this one done.
Maybe it's a new course for the Iron Horse, uh, half marathon.
It's just, I mean, it's beautiful, right? Because again, it's, it's, it's just, I mean, again, you know, back in my day, we used to walk downtown and we didn't worry about sidewalks. But, you know, now it's, uh, it's, uh, I mean, it's critically important for safety, right? Eric, you're, you're getting there, buddy. Don't, uh, don't, don't be laughing at my old man jokes. But, um, I mean, again, we spent all this money on connectivity, right? And rightfully so. And this is a huge, just visual missing link to that center of town connectivity, so.
Well, while we're talking about age, let's just mention that yesterday was Sean's birthday.
Thanks.
Uh, happy birthday, Sean.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy.
And I think it was recently Heather's birthday, just a couple of days before, maybe?
Well, happy birthday. To, to where we don't have cake here. Maybe next time.
Yeah, it was my birthday last month. We just keep going around. Hurry. I didn't hear, I didn't hear anything. Alright, keep going. Okay.
Let's keep Heather's birthday. That, that, that is exciting. Talk more about Heather's birthday.
Okay, so let's, if the Board of Selectmen supports submitting a transportation project funding request to CROG for the construction of approximately 5,000 linear feet of new sidewalk along Firetown Road, the following motion is in order. Move effective January 10th, 2022 to submit a proposal and funding request to CROG under the Lotsit 2022 Solicitation to fund the construction of approximately 5,000 linear feet of new sidewalk along Firetown Road and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capiola to execute the application documents. And in the event that the grant is awarded, the following additional motion is in order. To move to accept the Lotsit 2022 Solicitation Funding, should it be awarded to the town and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capiola to execute all documents related to the grant award.
So moved.
Sean, anyone second?
Second.
Was that Eric?
I, I did.
Okay, okay. So Eric second. Any other discussion? All those, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, that, that passes. And now we get to.
Thanks, Tom. Nice work.
So now we're going to talk about the American Rescue Plan Act Public Hearing. Um, we had been talking about this at our work group, which has been meeting since August, July, July, June. It's been meeting for a while off and on. Um, and as everyone knows, we're getting seven and a half million dollars from the federal government to use in multiple ways. So we, as a team, wanted to start reaching out to hear what our residents feel, you know, would be good ways to use this. Um, there's a little caveat here because up until yesterday, we were following the interim final rule, which was what we based a lot of our documentation and, and kind of conversations on. And the, the government has just come out with the final rule, which really changes things in, in, in some of the instances of how we can use the money and offers a lot more flexibility. So, uh, we're still going to go forward with the public hearing, but I'm going to try to get out there some of the, the newer information on this in just a couple of places to look. On the Board of Selectmen page, we have the original ARPA presentation that we did, which you can look at, at a high level, it still pretty much holds. And then there's some links in the back for the basic information. And then the other thing that I just want to point to is, um, there's www.treasury.gov slash slfrp, which somehow I'm going to get out there too. We can reference that. And that has the whole overview of the new rulings. So for those who are interested in coming to public hearing, you might want to do a little homework. Um, or you can just come and say what you think. But, um, those are some of the good places to look for reference. And I'm going to turn it over to my partner, Sean, on this team to let him weigh in on this.
Yeah, so I mean, thank you, Wendy, and, and appreciated all your work on this. Um, yeah, so this, in a good way, I think we got, we got thrown a curveball yesterday. So I, I think we still got to connect with, with Amy um, to, to confirm what we believe to be our, um, our increased flexibility and I think it all true. So originally, I think this public hearing was, uh, was absolutely to, to solicit public feedback, but also as an educational process for our board to share to the public what we could and couldn't do. So I think we're going to have to pivot, uh, a little bit here in terms of what we can do um, or could consider, uh, is, is certainly broader, um, with this revised wording or appears to be broader with this wording. So, uh, either way, the intent still holds true is, is it's important that we educate, um, the, the residents of the town, you know, how we could use the money, certainly solicit ideas um, for, for concepts that we certainly haven't thought of and we haven't thought of everything. Um, but I think previously we were going into this thinking perhaps it was deluxe air conditioning. Um, and maybe, uh, some limited grant programs, uh, for businesses and certainly for nonprofits. And, uh, some of the articles in the newspaper, uh, about other more creative processes that we've heard about or projects uh, are very much potentially on the table now that we've, we've heard this guidance, uh, especially around the revenue loss communities and what, what we are. So again, uh, the intent of next time is to, is to further that education of what the heck is ARPA because we throw it around. Um, and, and at a high level, what do we start to intend to do with that seven and a half million? Uh, you know, Wendy and I have talked about, uh, for the last six months, we're not in a rush to spend this money. Um, but we're also not going to unnecessarily constrain, uh, uh, organizations that need relief from this from getting it. So, uh, you know, bringing forward the nonprofit plan. Uh, you know, talking about the business grant program that we've, we've talked about, there's a lot of good work that's been done uh, by Melissa and Amy and, and Maria and I, uh, Wendy, correct me if I'm wrong, but Bob, Bob DiCrescenzo has, has looked at some of the documentation as well. Uh, so a lot is, uh, a lot is getting ready to get out there. And then as we embark on, uh, my favorite time of the year, which is budget. And of course, the subset of that, which is the capital plan, um, what do we want to think about as, as a group of six, right? Because the capital plan um, is ours first and, and we manage that both on the town side and the board of education side. And then we send it to the board of finance for funding. So as we look at the current year's capital and future year, we make those prioritization decisions. How do we want to make those priorities? How do we want to think creatively about potentially using, um, the American Rescue money um, for projects that this community needs that could help, um, you know, improve the community. And again, personally, I feel that we should try to stick to, um, the concepts of mental health and, and well-being of a community a, as well as relief, um, are certainly from the, the pandemic. And I think that's a pretty broad range when you talk about it, you know, other communities have talked about parks and outdoor space. And I think we all agree that, gosh, um, and, and thank God we have the community, we do, that out, outdoor space has, I think, been uh, a, a wonderful, um, respite for folks from the pandemic, that we at least get to see other human beings, six feet apart, of course, in most cases. Um, but that we are blessed with a lot of, a lot of open space in this community. So how can we further that? Um, how can we help, um, you know, perhaps, um, certain portions of town, perhaps Terriffel, um, River Access, you know, there are lots of things that we have talked about, uh, very actively at the, at the subcommittee level. So would, uh, looking forward to, to sharing more, uh, with this group as we certainly owe you guys an update and, uh, and our residents. So, thanks, Wendy.
Thanks, John. That was great. Okay, so, um, I think we're all in favor. Uh, if the Board of Selectmen supports scheduling a public hearing to receive comment concerning the use of funds received by the town through the American Rescue Plan Act, the following motion is in order. Move effective January 10th, 2022 to set a public hearing to receive public comment concerning the use of funds received by the town through the, the American Rescue Plan Act for 6:00 PM on Monday, January 24th, 2022.
Move that.
Sean?
Second.
Chris second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and just, uh, we can also, we're going to have the public hearing at the 24th. Depending on how we meet, we'll determine how we get the feedback. So just keep, keep alert. We'll try to share that with everybody. And then if we do get a lot of feedback, we don't necessarily have to close the public hearing and we could keep it open. Um, you know, as we learn more about final rule, you know, we may want to get more, more feedback. So, thank you. So the next item is, is a resignation of Diane Madigan as an alternate member of the zoning commission. Move retroactive to December 6th, 2021 to accept the resignation of Diane Madigan as an alternate member of the zoning commission.
Is there a thing? So move that.
Okay, Sean, move that.
Second.
Eric is the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And no opposed? So that carries. Resignation of Sarah Kramer from Culture Parks and Ruck. Um, move retroactive to January 1st, 2022 to accept the resignation of Sarah Kramer from the Culture Parks and Recreation Commission. Somebody want it?
So moved. Thank you, Sarah.
Chris, move that? Need a second. Amber, the second. Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
So we have some new and exciting appointments to the Spirit Council. Um, there are currently three vacancies on the Spirit Council for 18 slots. And this is to, um, the Spirit Council's recommending the appointment of Alex Rieger, Jackie Batos and Suzanne Fiola. So I'd like to move effective January 10th, 2022 to appoint Alex Rieger, Jackie Batos and Suzanne Fiola as regular members of the Spirit Council with terms expiring December 4th, 2023.
So moved.
Eric?
Who's, who's that Batos person? She sounds.
I don't know. Letting her into town government. Um, Sean second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now I don't see any opposed, so that's good.
Glad to see you.
Okay, so the meetings, the, the minutes, the meeting, sorry. Um, anybody have any feedback on the minutes? Don't hear any feedback. Okay. Okay, so that's, the minutes are good to go, right? And we now, oh, now we're going to adjourn. We have an executive session um, to just talk about the Blight Enforcement at 442 Hot Meadow Street. So somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Amber?
So moved, yes.
Okay, and Heather second that. All those in favor?
Wendy, real quick, we also need to include, um, who's going to join outside of this group? Uh, in the motion.
Okay, thank you. Who is, we have Maria? Who's?
Yep, we would just have, um, joining us for the executive session would be myself, um, Melissa Appleby, our town attorney, uh, Bob DiCrescenzo, and our assistant town planner, Tom Hazel. Um, and we would just need the motion to reflect that we are going into executive session and then adjournment would just come following the executive session.
Okay, so we're going to make a motion that we're going into a executive session and that we're going to adjourn, right?
You don't have to worry about adjournment until after the executive session.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so did somebody adjourn? So make a motion to adjourn. We did, so we're, we're done.
No. I make a motion that we move into executive session with the Town Manager Maria Capiola, Attorney Bob DiCrescenzo,
Oh, we have.
the assistant town planner, Tom Hazel and the board.